All right, so I will do a quick roll call. We have Mike Bouchard, Marianne Barnsley, Carl Evans, myself, Rebecca Hansen. We have Sue Wood and Mark Sturgeon. We expect to see Mike Ahern shortly. John Christ, Phil Lammerow, and Steve Whitman are a little excused. Since we just have three full members, four, five? Four full members right now. I'd invite Mike Bouchard and Sue to join as full voting members this evening. All right. Do I need to read any suggest? I know there's no suggested disclaimer, but there's nothing that says like you can join via Zoom or anything like that. Okay, good.
No. The only thing that I would add, just quickly, for those, we have some planning board members here. This is their first in-person planning board meeting. And then with the audience, too. I just thought, you know, the way you came in is one way in in the building. But we do have an emergency exit down the back way here. Just always try to think of those things, so.
And I should mention that in the roll call that June Hammond Rowan is here as well. And we have Mike Ahern also. All right. Moving on to the first order of business. We have a review of minutes from our site walk on June 3rd. Does the board have any comments, edits for the site walk minutes? Or someone could make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the site visit on June 3rd.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes?
I gotta get my glasses.
Oh. I don't know if we have enough people to, do we have enough people to? One, two, three, four? That's enough, okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any abstentions?
Stay.
All right, so two abstentions, four ayes, that means no nays. All right. Minutes are, from the site walk, are visit, are approved. Next up, the minutes from our work session meeting on June 3rd. Anyone have any comments, edits on the meeting minutes? I have one thing I'd like to see change, a number seven. I probably said this, but I want, it says Hansen stated she would like to revert to the traditional way of ordering applications. I think it just, I don't know if we want to say that that is actually the traditional way so much as the way, just ordering the application so that the completeness and the public hearing happens together. Makes sense, June?
Yeah, so you don't want, you want to take out revert?
I just said the traditional way is hanging me up a little bit because I don't know.
Yeah. Revert to ordering applications.
If that works for everyone. It's sort of internally traditional, I suppose, but. Any other comments, edits on the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Carl. Is there a second?
A second.
There you are. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And I heard one abstention. Any other abstentions?
Stay.
Good. Thank you. All right. Moving on to acknowledgement of communications received. June, are there any other communications aside from ones that pertain to applications?
Just the one that was included in your packet of information.
Thank you. Good. Next up, we've got two new applications of public hearings. So the first one is a subdivision. This is a minor subdivision of a, on a 20.99 acre lot located, oh, sorry. Subdivision of a 20.99 acre lot located to create a conforming parcel of 7.98 acres with the remaining 3.01 acres in the parent parcel. I know we've got some of the applicants here. Just the way things work for the applicants coming up this evening is we will do a, we'll ask the applicant to present briefly on the completeness of the application, specifically focusing on any waivers that they're asking for. I think these are both subdivisions, so anything in the subdivision regulations. And then the board will ask questions. We'll make a ruling on the completeness of the application. If we determine that the application is complete, we will then move it into the public hearing, which is when we can think of more content-based substantive questions about, information about the application itself. So Grace, Jim, I saw Todd on the screen. Would you like to come up? And we do need you to speak into the microphone, so the folks at home and can hear you chat as well.
Can you hear me back?
And I'm going to screen, try the screen share, so people not attending here and person can hopefully see.
So, and I re-ingraves, Garvey, we have Jim McHugh, who's also co-owner of this parcel. And my husband, Todd, I believe, is here by Zoom. I think the application's pretty straightforward. It's a total of 20.99 acres. We had a survey completed on the property, and we're just looking to subdivide into two residential lots, one being 7.89 acres and the other being 13.01. And we're not asking for any waivers or.
Any questions from the board about the completeness of the application? And we all received the planner report, which gives us a little more information and does specify that recommendation is to accept the application. Any comment about that, June?
Like Grace said, it's pretty straightforward, I think. And it does not need DES subdivision approval because both lots are over five acres, so.
Questions from the board about the completeness of the application? Is there perhaps a motion to accept this application as complete?
Chair, I just wanted to point out that my family's trust is adjacent. And I have no problem voting if there's, not a problem for me.
I mean, if you're keeping a, yeah, if you don't feel the need to step down.
Yeah, I don't feel the need, unless the applicant.
I think that's really up to the boards.
I mean, it's up to me, but I, if the applicant had a problem, I would.
I think maybe, since there is a question, if you don't mind just recusing yourself on this one, I think just to avoid any conflict, the potential or perception of conflict, if that's okay?
I'll probably stay on and vote.
All right. Okay, so is there a motion to accept this application as complete?
Motion to accept.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor, or any further discussion? Didn't think so. All those in favor of accepting this application as complete, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So now we can talk a little more about the application. Any specific questions directed at the applicant before I try and think of some questions to ask?
One thing I would just note that they did submit a revised version. I think everybody got, they may have a version that in front of you that says map 240, lot 10, but it's really map 234. And we did get a revision just on the title box in the bottom right corner. So this, the one that's up is correct.
If the board has no comment, I will open this up to a public hearing at 6:42. Does anyone, any member of the public wish to speak of any nature about this application? If you do, I'd ask you to actually come up to the microphone so we can make sure that the folks at home can hear you. All right, 30 seconds later, I'm going to close the public.
And I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Oh, thank you.
Raising their hands unless.
Yeah. So easy to all of a sudden get shifted out of that world. Okay, so no con, anything else from the board? All right. Someone like to make a deciding motion on this application?
So moved.
So moved what?
So moved to approve the application.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving this application, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Revision is approved.
I just want to give a shout out to June and Juliette for making it so easy to get to this point. I really am grateful for all that just answered questions and things because we decided to represent ourselves in this matter. And so you'll need a Mylar from the surveyor?
Yep. And I will have to check on the recorded deeds of, we'll, we have to get them tomorrow.
All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to our next new application. This is a minor subdivision of a 29.6 acre lot located to create a conforming parcel of 13 acres with the remaining 16.6 acres in the parent parcel. This is on Texas Hill Road. Do we have, looks like the applicant is Nancy Haynes? Is that who's going to be presenting or is that?
Richard Galen's here. And he was authorized as the representative.
Okay, thank you. Richard, if you want to step up to the podium. And I think in particular with this application, we do need to hear about the waivers you're requesting from the, from the board for this application, so.
I think the waivers were doing the topography on the whole thing. Was that pretty much it? Is my understanding?
I think that's what I'm understanding, that.
And a full boundary survey.
And a full boundary survey, yeah.
Just had the one part about this being taken out.
As this is 13 acres coming off from the far side of the lot, we requested not to do the full, or asked for a waiver to not do the full boundary survey as the rest of it is clearly big enough to support itself and has already been established as a lot. There's a house on it, so really there was no necessary reason to go around the perimeter. Mostly you're concerned with the lot itself, which is the 13 acres, which also is more than large enough to meet the regulations of the town.
Questions from the board about the completeness of this application? Do we need to do anything more? We just need to accept, if we do accept the application, say we're accepting it with those two waivers?
Making that in the motion would be good.
Okay, all right. Questions from the board about the completeness of this application? I'm not sure if this is the time to talk about the, I think part of the question with this application is the contention with the other property line that's within the parent parcel. And June, would you recommend saving that until the, we talk about the, get through to the public hearing section thing? Okay. So it's, I will say that it is fairly typical for us in a subdivision of this size to not deal with the topography or to accept the waivers that are being asked, so.
And I would mention that back in April, Richard Galen came to the planning board meeting and we talked about it. So there was, I had that clip from the minutes and the staff report saying we're just, yeah, using a topo map and that wouldn't necessarily need a full perimeter of the entire boundary, which has been typical. But there is an old survey plan at the registry of the entire boundary, so that's noted on the plan.
So just, so I'm clear. Oh, those microphones are good. Mark preliminary, not stamped, needs to be stamped eventually by our surveyor? Are we saying that?
I have stamped plans. Goodness, thank you.
Yeah, I think we can, that's something we can do. It's worth mentioning here, too, because that is something that we're requiring, but we have them, so, yeah. All right. So if there's no comment from the board, perhaps there's a motion to accept this application as complete with the two waivers to not have the contours or the full perimeter survey? Does that, does that work? Anyone like to make that, that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan with.
Accept the plan.
Accept the plan with the two waivers, remind me, contours and.
Full perimeter survey.
Full perimeter certification.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
So. So there's a question about the property lines. And normally that is not something that we would entertain. But in this case, it hasn't been surveyed, and the last time it was surveyed was when? Just recently?
We're going to address that? Can I address it?
Let's just let Mike finish his, his thought here.
I don't have the survey in front of me. I had two of the other one.
So this, here's the entire parcel. And this is, this part has been fully surveyed. However, the entire boundary was, including this section, was surveyed, I think in the 70s. There's a note.
And this is where the butter is saying that there's some contention.
Yes.
So the last time it was surveyed was the 1970s.
Yes.
And.
And I believe it may have been prior to us having subdivision approval.
But this has been.
This lot predates subdivision approval.
And this one has just been surveyed recently.
Correct. That's, this lot here is this piece here. So the details show up on this. And I've got a fuller, I have a full set, if you want to see that. Anybody needs to see the larger?
So I want to make sure I. And I'm just reading the, the butter's letter, but. Richard, can you show on this map, looking at the manger lot, we're creating this lot here from this big lot? And we're voting on right now to waive the requirement to have it surveyed.
The parent parcel.
Higher parcel.
The entire parcel, whereas just this lot has been.
Right.
And there's no contention with these.
Correct.
Boundaries, correct? Just want to make sure I understand that.
Right, if you look at the map in the upper corner, you can see where the.
Okay. So it would not affect this lot at all. It would, it could potentially affect this lot.
Right, the parent, the parent lot.
I get it now.
And I'm putting it up there and I can try to make this bigger.
I just didn't have a map.
I think if it was the, if the abutter property was actually abutting the, what we're carving out, I feel like it would be a different story.
Right, I would agree.
This is the entire parcel, including, you know, the boundary of the entire parent parcel. Sorry, Richard.
No, no, you're fine.
Is here, including, you know, they are not, does not include this lot here.
And it's not, and the minimum.
This part, the entire, the old survey is of the entire area. And then this, this more detailed survey, there was all the, all the boundaries were surveyed and there is some purple on here.
191 feet. And are we talking 191 feet for the newly created lot? Or is that?
Frontage?
The frontage?
I can't remember.
Much more.
Okay. Then it's not like we're, it's finding a minimum of size. We're talking about a large lot. Yeah.
Yeah, 13 acre lot.
I'm ready to vote.
Just for my, just so the board knows, which, how do you determine which is the parent parcel and which is the, is it based on size or where there's a residence or?
The parent parcel is the whole thing. So you end up with the two lots, yeah. You end up, you do end up with two lots. It's just for the sale of this one, you need the more accurate meets and bounds in that description, you know, that's there. And then for the other one, it would still have that based on the old survey, too. It's not like it wasn't surveyed.
Right.
So if there was no survey from the 70s, we would want to see a survey of it. But there's a note on the plan that talks about, plan reference, note number four. It's recorded at the registry, 1976. And at that point, that, that small lot in the, that's in, you know, this was part of that plan. This lot was on there. This lot was subdivided out after that.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting this application with the two waivers we've talked about, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, so if accepted, that application is complete. Any further details we need from the public before we, we will talk about the abutter comments, but any further comments from the board before I open it up to a public hearing? Or if anyone wants to bring up the abutter comments that we did receive? Well, I'll open it up to a public hearing then. It is 6:54. Anyone who wishes to speak of any nature about this application, please come up and do so at the microphone and make sure you introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, how are you? My name is Tiffany Doobie and I am the abutter of Nancy Haynes, who just, that you talked about her proposal. And I sent you a packet of information and then hopefully you all had a chance to take a look at it. I understand that what she's trying to carve out is not abutting mine. But my main concern, it sounds like, is that the survey back in 1976 that was provided by John French and is recorded in the registry of deeds that was also approved by the town of Plymouth, that was flawed. It does not, if you look at the, the survey, it does not, the accurate dimensions do not go according to my warranty deed. So I'm just wondering how you can reference that survey when it was in fact not accurate? And that is the entire parcel of land that you're talking about. It's very clear if you look at the map that Mr. French, that you have only a quarter of it, I believe, the part that's in contention. But you can see that what they did was when he surveyed it, he clearly moved the pins back so that there could be a second access to the triangular piece of land that's on the right side of my property when you're looking at it. So they moved the pins back, disregarded my warranty deed so that there could be a second access. And you can see that it's short, 125 feet on one side and 79 feet on the other side. So this goes way back. And what I'm just asking the planning board to do is to just temporarily deny Ms. Haynes' proposal until we get some accurate lines. It is 29, you know, point, whatever it is, acres. And part of that parcel is mine, that she's trying to subdivide. If you want to think about it, as I heard you say, it's a, you know, it's the whole thing. She is subdividing it. And I know that the planning board, your job is not to set a land dispute, and that's not what I'm asking. I hope that she can subdivide this and that would be great for her, but I just think we should get this, it's been going on for a long time. And the town of Plymouth, if you look, I sent you some information from Cartographic Associates Incorporated that the town of Plymouth has hired. And they also state that there's land in contention. And I just want to see this get cleared up before she subdivides.
Thank you. Any questions? Does the board have any questions for the abutter? Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Is there anyone on the Zoom that needs to chime in?
Let me check. Do not see anybody on Zoom raising their hand or.
Okay. So it's 6:58. I will close the public.
Should I address that now or after?
I think, I'll, we'll let you know when we, when we're ready to hear from you on that. 6:58, closing the public hearing. Board members, comments, discussion on the abutter concerns about the property line? Yeah, Mike?
Would, after the abutter gets a chance to hear from Richard, would she, would it be part of the hearing if she wanted to speak again? That's my concern.
I mean, she can, we can certainly let her speak again, yeah.
Because I'm interested in hearing this a lot more.
Yeah, Richard, why don't you go ahead and address the abutter comments?
I don't have a great deal to talk about that. I'm not involved with that contention. And as you can clearly see, the contention is on this far end of the property. And the contention is not going to go away with this meeting or not, okay? That's something that should be done within a court of law and with surveyors, not within the planning board jurisdiction of that. We have stayed well away and created a conforming lot with Plymouth subdivision regulations, and that's it. I'm not going to say who's right or wrong over there. I don't know. It's not part of what we're doing here. So that's kind of the long and short of it. Questions for me?
Good, Mike?
So I would, my only concern would be if creating that other lot would make the parent lot then non-conforming, if. And if there's no, if there is no non-conforming lot by doing that, then it's really out of the purview of the planning board and for good reason. I mean, land disputes. It's tough to find everybody, every abutter to agree upon where, where that pile of stones is or, and in this case, I'm sure it's not a pile of stones. And I, I know what it's like to not agree with every single abutter. Back in the 80s, it was, there was some interesting. So as long, for me, as long as that doesn't create a non-conforming lot, that if that lot did go back to the property line and that little triangle would somehow make something not, I'd be ready to just go forward on that one issue.
So what you're saying basically is if there were lines, it would adjust the frontage or minimum lot size or something like that? But it seems like there's enough frontage, there's enough acreage, that if we move, if we, we're not moving boundary lines, if those boundary lines move, it's not going to significantly change acreage, at least as far as a tallying, as tallying it goes, so it'll still meet our minimum requirements for subdivision?
As Richard said, we're just, we can't be the mechanism. It's, it would be really hard for a planning board, and I feel bad because it would be nice to get to the bottom of it, but it may not. May, disputes may go back to when Plymouth was founded, you just don't know. And that's where it's a court, or not a court, but something that has a lot more familiarity with these laws would be making those determinations, not us.
And I don't see where it has any effect on the proposal that we're here to look at anyway. I mean, I think she has a legitimate complaint and maybe should take it to. I mean, I think she has a legitimate complaint and maybe should take it to a different venue, but I don't think it's got any impact on why we're here.
June, did you want to say something?
The only thing I would add that, I did a little bit of, I'm a surveyor and attorney, but it appears to me from looking at the deeds that this lot was probably carved out prior to Plymouth having subdivision. So that kind of confound, you know, so this, somebody could have done a handshake to change something that was never done, that's properly on a deed, who knows? But because there's no, you know, we think of this as a subdivision, it looks like a subdivision that probably taken out this larger parcel at some point. But if it happened, you know, in the sixties or something before we had subdivision regulations, those things can just sort of informally be a record and could be a he said, she said or something. Who knows? If it was, you know, happened ten years ago when we had subdivision regulations and there was some mistake in a plan that the board had reviewed and adopted, but it's so old that we can't, we can't tell, you know? And that isn't our job to figure that out. Your job.
I do see that if we do decide to approve the subdivision, that we should add a condition that there is a note added to, or amend note eleven on the plans to add that the planning board approval does not guarantee the location of any surveyed boundaries. Or unsurveyed.
Unsurveyed. Yeah, I made a typo there. I apologize.
I have corrected, but then I forgot. Unsurveyed boundaries.
That's a big typo.
Yeah.
Non-surveyed, maybe. Non-surveyed might be better.
Any further discussion from the board? What other folks think about moving forward with an approval, adding that condition? Makes sense? And we have plans now that say, don't say preliminary anymore?
I have them.
They have them. Okay.
Or you have a condition that's going on the plan. I'm going to have to have a.
Okay. We'll just add that as a condition since we don't have those in hand right now, so.
Yeah.
All right. So if we do go forward with an approval, there'll be two conditions that, the plan be amended to change preliminary plan to a note and further revisions to be noted and dated. Does that, that make sense? Note number eleven be amended by adding a sentence that said, "Planning board approval does not guarantee the location of any unsurveyed boundaries." Would anyone like to, does anyone have any discussion about those suggested conditions for a potential approval? Or perhaps somebody would like to make a motion with those two suggested conditions?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving this application with the two conditions, please say aye.
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 No abstaining, no opposed? Okay. Subdivision is approved. Good luck with the, the property line dispute. And we'll move on to the next one.
Thank you all for doing what you do. Have a great night.
You too, Richard.
Night.
All right. So we have a continuation of a minor subdivision of a twelve point five, say, five, seven acre lot to create a conforming parcel of five point three nine acres with the remaining seven point eight acres in the parent parcel. We have the applicant, Eric, she's here. So this is, application has already been accepted as complete. We've done a site walk on this. And now we are back to continuing the public hearing and discussing this as a board. So, let's see. Any, June, do you want to just highlight the, the stuff in red that you put there just so?
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to struggle a little bit. Do I do a whole new review? And the subdivision, there's two applications here and we can kind of talked about them together in a way, but they are, again, two applications. So the first one, the subdivision, the concerns that I had outlined for the previous meeting, I tried to give this update in red and basically saying that it looks like things had been, basically been taken care of. And, you know, you did accept the application. We had the site visit to review the site. And there wasn't really anything, I didn't feel it came out of that discussion about the subdivision part so much. So it, it looks like things could be ready to be approved on that with, you know, with just a condition addressing this change in the location of easement, that that should really be done at the applicant's expense to do the proper paperwork to move, because you have to rekind of describe the location of the easement that's through the town's property outback. Since this is being prompted by this proposed development, that should be part of stipulation saying that that really comes as a result of this, so it should be done at their expense. And then that there's no change to any of the easements to the state of New Hampshire. We did have some correspondence back and forth with DES and they have reviewed the plans and determined that any of the site approval or the subdivision really isn't changing the drainage to put any new drainage towards the area of contamination. So they are okay with what's being proposed. They just see no problems with it, which was good. They don't officially approve things, but they didn't have any comments. If something was, the runoff or drainage was somehow going, you know, towards that contaminated area, they would probably feel differently. However, again, that is really, would be as a result of the site development for the site plan. So the subdivision looks like it's ready, I think it, you know, you could, we could approve it. I've recommended two conditions in the red there. However, because this is tied to the site plan and you still have enough time to be within the sixty day, sixty-five day timeline from acceptance of the plan to make a decision on it, you could wait till the next meeting or certainly at least till we discuss the site plan because they are sort of hand in hand. I don't know if the applicant would even want the subdivision if the site plan wasn't approved for some reason. So I think that's something to maybe ask. If there's any, any, you know, why would you do this if there wasn't really this development being proposed? Okay? So on the site plan, I did do a new, kind of referenced the old, you know, I had extensive comments on the previous site, my staff report for the previous view of the site plan because it was still somewhat preliminary. They, right before the last planning board meeting in Ju, in May, they submitted some revised plans. So we took a look at that. You accepted it on May twentieth. We did the site walk. Mike Vignali from KV Partners, we got the escrow account set up quickly. Thank you to Dragonfly for getting that done fast. We got the plans to Mike Vignali. He did the review. So you had a copy of that letter from him where he had a fairly long list, a bulleted list in that letter of things that he was seeing as issues in the design and setup of the plan as they are, as it was presented. So the next step really should be for the applicant to address those and submit to the planning department a new set of plans. Then we'll send it on to Mike Vignali, who will do another review and either say that, yes, they met, met all these concerns on the bullet and they took care of them and addressed them. Or sometimes there'll be a new concern, or they might say, you know, he did, they did all of these except for these three or something. So until you, this is based on the town's engineer's review. Until we see the plans revised with these things being addressed to the satisfaction of our engineer, I would recommend you just, you have the public hearing, you should still open it and then hear from the applicant also and then, you know, continue the hearing on to the July meeting when there's more time for them to get a revised set of plans in. So even if there was a revised set of plans brought forward tonight, I, you know, we need Mike Vignali. My recommendation is to still have the town engineer review it because there's enough things there that aren't just something I feel like I can check off on.
Questions, comments from the board on this? Mike?
I guess I would just like to hear the applicant talk about Mike Vignali's letter.
Eric, do you want to step up to the microphone? I think, yeah, I can keep talking while you.
I did send it to Eric about a week ago, you know, when, last Friday, I think it was, right?
So we on subdivision or we on site?
We're sort of doing things, it's, it's hard to talk about one without talking about the other. We could certainly start with the subdivision because it looks like, I mean, we haven't discussed this as a board, but it looks like, we'll open up the public hearing again tonight on both applications because we just, I think we should, but, but it seems like the subdivision is pretty much ready to go with, with just a few conditions. So the board can discuss and we can, you know, do you want a subdivision approval?
Yes. At this time, I'd ask that you'd vote on the subdivision side of it. And then whatever happens with the site plan, I'm coming back to resolve that until I get this taken care of.
Okay.
So in terms of the subdivision, there's actually, that change that right away actually affects both of those deeds. So I have to have my surveyor, Kevin French, provide the information to my attorney and break it up for both of those deeds because the existing building, it shifts on that property and then continues on to what would be the new right of way to, you know, to the town lot. So if it's ready to be approved, I would ask that, or ready to be voted on, I'd ask that you vote on that now. I'll have my attorney generate those easements and submit, I guess, a draft copy to the town, make sure that they're okay with it, and then we'd have that in place for the next meeting. As, in regard to the other issues and moving on to sort of the site plan side, a couple of quick observations. The one correction I need to make is that on one of the plans we submitted, we had put the area that was that loading dock that we had walked through in the site plan as being a proposed parking area. That has always been a parking area and we have a survey dated two thousand and nineteen that actually shows that as being an existing parking area. So it needs maintenance. As you saw, it had sort of soil that went down on it. I took a shovel and dug down and four to six inches down, there's a, there's a heavy layer of gravel there from the existing parking lot. So we will revise that on the next set of plans that you'll get that will show that this is an existing parking area. And that was one of the references in there. There was also a reference in regard to a dumpster on the KV Partners letter. You do not put a dumpster at a self-storage unit because when someone leaves, they just fill it up. We do have on our loading dock, an area that we handle refuge and we will be responsible for policing the property and making sure there's no refuge left there at all. So there will be no dumpster. I don't know if that needs a waiver, June? Do you need a waiver for a dumpster or not?
I think what you can do with this is anything that, when you have a response that, no, I actually don't need this, it just put, you know, you can take his comments, the engineer's comments, and just respond to each thing. Okay, we've noted on the plan in blah, 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 or we don't need a dumpster because people are going to fill up their storage unit contents into the dumpster or something. Yeah.
You know, just saying on that one, saying, no, there is no dumpster.
Okay. And then I guess in regard to the substance of KV Partners' letter, which is really, has to do with the drainage side. Brown Engineering, which I have a representative here tonight who can answer questions directly, built that to adhere to the town of Plymouth's standards. The engineer that the town had engaged ended up referencing, I guess, the engineering standard that if you disturb, I guess, a hundred thousand square feet of land, you have a higher standard in terms of drainage. He's using a higher standard for the drainage, which would actually increase the drainage pond to a certain extent. My intent is to ask the engineer to increase the size of our retention pond to adhere to that higher standard. So in regard to the site plan, I'd ask for a continuance until the July meeting. We will have the revisions to the town prior to that meeting and then, you know, go from there. Now, in regard to the overall plan, I can answer any questions you might have. If you have a question in regard to either drainage or erosion, I would ask that you allow me to bring my engineer up because I really don't know much about it.
And I can't speak for everyone here, but I'm not an engineer as well, which is why we reach out to, we have an engineer to review these. So sometimes it's good for, you know, for the engineer to respond to the engineer's comments. But do you have any questions about engineering stormwater or any questions about the, or comments about the town engineer's review of the plans?
The one thing I would just, it's more about a timeline. I put it on my, my comments here that we actually would need any revised plans, I've said here, but hopefully by June thirtieth or we can talk about how doable that is for you guys. Because we would want ideally you to get us revised plans and then we can get it to Mike and then he has a week or so to revise the plans, or to review them, excuse me. And I would be doing a mailing to the planning board around probably July ninth in preparation for the fifteenth meeting. So I do it the Friday before usually, so they have time to get it over the weekend. And so we would want Mike's review done by July, July ninth, with the Fourth of July holiday, if we could get it by June thirtieth. I think you can pull that off.
We can meet that deadline.
All right. If there's no other comments from the board, I will open up two separate public hearings, one for the subdivision and one for the site plan. Does that work for everyone? Okay. It is seven twenty. Any comments? I'm opening the public hearing for the subdivision. So any comments from the public about the subdivision application? I don't see any in here. Are there any in the, on the interweb? No. Okay. It is still seven twenty. I'm going to close the public hearing on this, on the subdivision and it's still seven twenty and I'm opening the public hearing on the site plan review. Any comments from our in-person audience? I don't see any. How about our, nope?
I would suggest you consider continuing the hearing and then closing it.
Okay. Thank you. We do a vote for that, right? Continuing the public hearing? Okay. So I'm not going to close the public hearings. We'll unclose the first one I did and we will, can we, can we get a motion to continue?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the site plan.
Second. Site plan, yeah.
Okay, for the site plan. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you for making that easy, Mike. All right. So that brings us to the subdivision. Does the board feel good about moving the subdivision forward to a vote with, to the two conditions? That the location of the easement to the town's property be documented by an easement signed by the town of Plymouth and recorded registry of deeds. The note shall be added to the subdivision plan about the easement and the book and entry and page at the registry. And the second condition, a note be added that the subdivision does not change the easement to the state of New Hampshire and their right to access the site.
So I would make a motion that we approve the subdivision with those two conditions for the town to accept the change in the easement and to continue the easement for the state.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you.
Thanks for not getting used to asking for it. So thank you for just making motions. All right. Any further discussion on the approval with conditions on this subdivision? All right, any further discussion on the approval with conditions on this subdivision? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Okay, subdivision is approved and the site plan is continued to our next meeting, public hearing, July 15th. Thank you.
Want to ask the engineer, any question or?
Any questions for the engineer, surveyor? Any questions? Thank you, we'll see you next month.
Meetings go faster in person.
Wow.
Just kidding. We've been working on this one for a while though, so there's been some, some energy behind this one.
All right, I, I feel so unadjusted to the in-person meetings now, even though, you know, it's nice.
It's nice to meet everybody.
It's nice to be able to like, when I'm asking a question for somebody, I can like look at them instead of staring at their space on my screen and nobody knows that I'm looking at them. Yeah. All right, so next up, we have informational and pre-application reviews.
And I have a late edition under this category. I don't think I have copies exactly of everybody, but two of yours are on. This is just a conceptual plan that, this is the lot where Aroma Joes is going. So they're going to, most likely by, for the next planning board meeting in July, we will have a revised, amended, I guess it will be not revised, amended, site plan application for this lot where Aroma Joes is going, all right? So there's a proposal to put another business in there, another building with associated parking. So this, on the front, by Teddy Mountain Highway is the Aroma Joes that we approved, I think in April. And then this other proposed development, using the same driveway, trying to fit something else in there. I know that they have been working on trying to have this fit without wetland impacts, but there are, there are some wetland impacts, it looks like, in the back here, so they're gonna figure that part out. Looks like there's a fair amount of parking, given what I've been told the potential use may be, but it's all, not to, it's still not public because nothing's final in terms of signing any leases or sales or anything in there. But the owner of that parcel, Representative Mike McGinley, asked that I show it to you tonight just to give you a little bit of a heads up about it. And also, it kind of ties that the construction for Aroma Joes will be starting shortly, probably in, beginning of July, end of June, beginning of July. So this, they'll be starting to work on that and then we'll see this as another site plan coming in. I don't think there's a lot we can comment. I have given some, had a meeting with Mr. McGinley about this at one point and we talked about wetlands and space and argued about a few things and setbacks and this is what he came up with, so.
Okay, and because there's so much, the part, it's really just covering a little more than half or about half of the, the lot itself, so it's as far as impermeable surfaces.
Yeah, but the thing is, he's also got, this, you know, if you think about it and you go up Boulder Hill, there's actually a fair amount, there's no topo on this. We had the topo and, you know, the same engineering company, Dubois, as it Dubois and King, I think, will be working on this. So the only thing I would note is that this building, one of the issues with it is he is meeting the 30-foot setback because it's a corner lot, it has two front yards, so it has 30 feet setback. They, they actually were granted a variance years ago, I think about 10 years ago, when Boulder Point was widened at the bottom. There was a variance granted because it was somewhat taking, you know, moving, making that lot smaller, but it's very clear in our ordinance that the variances are only good for, I think it's, I can't remember, two years? Anyways, whatever the timeline is, it's expired basically because he didn't do any development to kind of act on that need for that variance at that time, so.
So they would need, you'd need to go back and get another variance.
Yeah, so what he's doing is instead pulling it back to meet that 30-foot, which reduces the buildable area for him, but it, I think will be important for site distance and all coming down Boulder Point too, so.
Is that one of the things that might be pushing more stuff into the wetland itself? Or?
Probably, yeah.
Mike?
Is there, on the north, south end, is there potential for another building? The open, going up the road?
There's more wetlands and then it's a fairly steep slope of that wooded, yeah, because then you're going up towards, you know, up there. So next time you go by, you know, take a look, it becomes pretty apparent, there's not a lot of space down there in the bottom of it, you know? So they gotta look at the drainage, they've gotta look at, you know, the area, again, we would have Mike Vignali review it and kind of thinking through, but I think there will be a little bit of a push on this, especially because construction will be starting on the other side. It would be, you know, a certain benefit, I think, to the developer to have something done there, but then I don't know what he'll need for wetlands permit, that could delay it for this piece, but at least the equipment would be there, I don't know what he's gonna do, so. Just a conceptual plan.
So is this just the pad? Are we talking for now, like he's done with getting the site prep and?
For, for the Aroma Joes or?
No, for, for this new?
I think he wants to go ahead and build it.
Oh, all right.
I mean, the Aroma Joes is going, is, you know, they're having a pre-construction meeting soon.
Yeah, I was talking about the new.
Yeah.
So you're asking if it's gonna do like a, like a building pad, like in the market basket area?
Yeah, yeah.
This is designed to be a building with associated parking because the end use of the building will drive what, how much parking it needs too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the parking might be a little heavy on it, but we can, we have to know what the use of that building is gonna be.
I think that, so for, it's a small building, it's 1,700 square feet, I measured it out, so.
Right.
The, just so everyone knows, with the market basket area, the Riverside Landing, that was approved, I guess we just did one too, the sort of pad, because if you're having multiple businesses on there, they needed the development before they could pull in the businesses. But on something like this, when it's, you know, there's no point in just developing a pad and then trying to pull in a business, it's, you know, it's a single business that can fit there, so, yeah.
And normally, they wouldn't have the parking spaces delineated if they were just looking for the site prep pad.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's good, good to know. Excellent.
Yeah, the dimension, because they're just squeezing in the dimensions of the building, it looked like it was 32 by 64, 54 now, I can't read that version of it, but I measured out, it looked like 1,728 square feet. The Aroma Joes building was just under 1,000 square feet, so these are small buildings, yeah. So that's why I think 21 parking spaces that are shown here is new, might be a little heavy once you hear about the use.
We'll get to that when we learn more. All right, any, anything else in, I guess we can go on to unfinished business. See any unfinished business? Anything from the board? Other business from members of the board? I just have one thing that I'm wondering if we want to, since our next work session, I think, is on the first of July, which is kind of getting into a holiday weekend, would we want to take the night off for July so we can get into some good stuff in, for our work session in August? Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I think it's at the chairman's discretion, I think that's a great idea.
Everyone is relinquished from their duty on July 1st.
So you're gonna vote, it's posted at, you know, in our schedule, so maybe you should vote to, well, I guess it's, you know, canceling the meeting might be good to.
Would?
Make a motion that we cancel July 1st work session meeting.
I'll second that.
All right.
I wasn't gonna be here anyway.
All those in favor of skipping our, or canceling our July 1st meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No one's opposed, huh? Great. It's nice to get an extra Thursday in the summertime too.
Yep.
Any other business from members of the board or?
These will be getting shorter.
Yeah.
All right, any, so nothing else from the board? Any comments from the public? I guess we maybe have a at-home audience, but not an in-person audience.
Got a few people, Slade Warner and Matt Yeton are on still, so.
Slade.
So we're good? All right.
I move we adjourn.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that. All right, any further discussion on adjourning? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Someone did say, it was so, it was so fast. Aye to adjourn.